County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. It is 10:05 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. You may tune in on the Thurston County YouTube channel if you would like to follow along. On our agenda for today is the Public Defense State Department. I am Carolina Mejia. I am Chair of Board, Vice Chair Time Mentor is excused for this meeting. Commissioner Gary Edwards is in the boardroom as well as County Manager Ramiro Chavez. Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell is tuning in via Zoom, is joining us via Zoom, as well as Patrick O'Connor, Director of Public Defense, and many of his staff members are joining us. So with this, I'll hand it over to Patrick or to...
Just straight to Patrick.
Okay, Patrick.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Commissioners. Patrick O'Connor, Director of Thurston County Public Defense. What we have for you today is the opportunity to get some information from us on the state of public defense and look back to last year and looking forward to some of the plans that we have set for this year. Joined here by my management team, so I'll give them the opportunity to introduce themselves. And I'll start with Jose.
Good morning, Jose Vargas, I'm the fiscal manager for the department.
Robin?
I'm Robin Martin. I am the supervisor for the juvenile and civil unit.
Kevin?
Morning, everyone. I'm Kevin Griffin. I supervise the felony unit.
And Mia.
Good morning. My name's Mia Pagnotta, and I'm the Executive Assistant for Public Defense.
And not joining us this morning, Commissioners, is another one of our senior defense attorneys, Angela Colada, who supervises our district court team. She's out on leave, on vacation. So I'm going to share my screen here and walk through our PowerPoint. I don't know if you have a physical copy in front of you or not. So I'm going to hope you can see this. Switching the slides. Okay, are we good?
We're good.
Okay, great. So well, as I mentioned, we'll go through our budget from last year. Happy to answer any questions about that. Sort of overview some of the business applications and operations here in the department. Take a look at how many clients we served and represented last year and some of our strategic objectives for this year and some initiatives that will be a part of. And then an open forum for the board to ask us any questions. I think we have plenty of time. We set this meeting for an hour, but don't expect it to go that long. But it very well, very well could go that long, depending on how much more information you're asking for. So taking a look back at our budget, we had a revised budget a little over $7 million. We had actual expenses a little over $6 million, and we ended up remitting a little over 11% of our budget. There's a variety of factors in play as to why we ended the year where we did. But really, I think the primary drivers that we've seen throughout the pandemic have really been the lack of jury trials for us as a department. We've gone through now a second consecutive fiscal year of remittance. And 2021 was a high remittance rate. But again, you know, with the suspension of jury trials, you know, we were not in a position to be, you know, spending professional service dollars that we normally would spend on experts, attorney fees for those independent counsel that represent clients doing trial work, and just a variety of factors related to the pandemic. Overall, it's obviously a good beneficial thing to remit general fund dollars back to the county. But again, we continue to live in, you know, different times in criminal justice related to the pandemic from the financial side. This year, you know, we're forecasting potentially a similar year to 2020 as opposed to 2021. We have jury trials back up and running in district court and in Superior Court. And frankly, we're all very optimistic that those jury trials will continue to remain open through this year. And we'll touch a little bit on, you know, what some of the challenges for us we expected to see this year. But one of the challenges, of course, is not being able to move cases through the system without jury trials being available. 2021 was also a new year for us in a couple of different ways. But one was new revenues, frankly, for the department that became available, that we took advantage of related to the pandemic. And those are noted in the revised slide here that indicates, you know, some of the funds that we received as a result of the Blake decision, grant funding that became available to the department. As the board knows, we have an internal State v. Blake team that consists of two attorneys and one legal assistant that are full-time dedicated staff to responding to the State v. Blake decision. And they continue to respond to that throughout 2022. You also notice that we did receive some emergency funds from State Office of Public Defense for coronavirus emergency supplementals. We, I'll show you how we applied those funds, but that was another revenue stream that we just didn't anticipate. And then, and then some additional TST program specialist funds. Overall, our, again, expenditures for the cost drivers for the department that are non-salary and benefit-related staff costs, hourly contracts, capacity contracts, and fixed-price contracts for our independent contracting attorneys that provide engine defense services outside of our department, and very low extraordinary justice costs, just a little over $28,000. Again, primarily related to not having trials. Quick overview of our budget for last year. And again, we'll continue, of course, to monitor budget impacts for this year. And we had already a good meeting with Robin about what we expect for this year. Second slide here is a snapshot of payment distribution for the department. And just to sort of circle back, we endeavored to change operations here in the department four years ago. And in doing so, we changed a lot of our business practices. And we've been tracking the impacts of those changes for the past four years. And I'll just highlight a couple, a couple key points, at least for me. Four years ago, this department was one of the, I think we were in the top three offices and departments that worked with financial services. In other words, our volume of work that we were working with financial services was very voluminous. We processed a lot of invoices, a lot of vendor invoices. And so some of the operations that we changed was really to reduce that volume to make us frankly more stable. And this slide sort of indicates that reduction. As you can see, if you look at the 2018 numbers in the top left box as to where we're at last year, you'll see a massive reduction in the number of invoices that come from this office that financial services has had to process. So the top slide sort of refers to the panel attorney processes of invoices for billable hours from our contracting attorneys. And below that are our professional services invoice, sort of a similar track of results that we set out to solve when it comes to our professional services. So those are things like experts that we rely on to provide engine defense, investigations that we rely upon, or contractors rely upon to provide engine defense, things of that nature, transcripts, excuse me, transcription reports, translators, all the other things that come with public defense that come out of our budget. So been very pleased with the successes of these changes. And I think they, they're borne out by, by the numbers. And please, I didn't mention this at the beginning, Commissioners, feel free to chime in at any point. It's hard for me to see everybody. So if you please, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Patrick.
You bet.
Let me, Commissioner Edwards, do you have any questions?
I do not. Okay. Thank you, Patrick. No big problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's hard for me to see everybody in the small box while I'm focusing on the, on the slides here. So I'll move on to the next slide, which is another historical slide that we like to present, which is essentially a snapshot of last year's assignments to the department. So the number of clients by division in the department that we served. Similar to the previous slide, we set out a very strategic plan four years ago to do a couple of things. One is to, is to meet our mission in that any client that's entitled to counsel, if we can provide that client representation in our office, then we should be providing representation with staff in our office if we can, if it's not a conflict. And that was the strategic plan. And through the support of the board in increasing our internal staffing numbers, we've been able to accomplish just that. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of that because the quality of representation that comes out of this department, I like to think is some of the best in the state. And so as you see these track numbers, if you look at the top slide there, excuse me, top portion of this slide are Superior Court numbers and number of clients that we represented. If you look, going from 2018 to last year, has consistently grown with the number of clients that we've served. And one of the measurables for each one of these, each one of these graphs for me has been keeping clients in our office and representing them if we don't have a conflict in a category of what we call overages. So those tables on the right, the bottom column that indicates overages, you'll see a downward trend from 2018 to 2021. And for me, what that indicates is that, A, we have the staffing levels here in the office to take those client, those client appointments, to be able to supervise the work being done by those attorneys, and again, to provide them a full defense. So specifically, what you'll see here, and it just real, it just occurred to me, I can use my cursor and you can see this. What you'll see here consistently is the number of cases, again, in the overage category consistently going down. And particularly, I just highlight, if you look at district court now, in 2018, you won't see a big difference there because that's when the board invested three new felony attorneys to the office. So if you looked at 2017, that number was much, much higher. But if you look at the investments from 2018 in district courts and through last year and in juvenile court, you'll see a substantial reduction in the number of cases that we had to send out of our office. So for me, that's a, that's where we want to be as a county, and that's certainly where we want to be as a department. If there are any questions about these numbers, I'll move on. I don't want to get down into the weeds. But for me, you know, looking back to the strategies that we started four years ago, whether it's the invoicing or bills that we're processing, streamlining those systems, or the number of clients that we wanted to serve, I think we've been very successful on both fronts. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll move to the next slide. And I'm peering at the screen, but I don't see anything. Okay. So I wanted to touch on and go over what we're working on for this year. My management team and I met at the end of last year, and we developed, of course, a new strategic plan for 2022. And I wanted to highlight some of those objectives that we've set forth for this year. Each objective, of course, has a variety of initiatives, but I wanted to keep it high level. One of the first objectives that we'll continue to work on, and frankly, will probably continue on as a strategic objective for the department, is to support professional development for our staff. And as the board knows, the board voted to increase our training budget for this year and for future years. And I just can't thank the board enough for that investment. That dollar amount means a lot to us, and we've already taken advantage of that opportunity. But supporting professional development, not just with each individual, but by our teams and as our department. We have very specific objectives to accomplish that. But again, I just wanted to share, I know my management teams and our staff's appreciation for the increase in that training budget because it really is key now more than ever, frankly, as we've seen with our job market, retaining our staff and our talent is a high priority. And providing them opportunities to grow professionally is, is one way to do that. So I thank you again. One of our other strategic objectives is to improve our organizational structure. So something we looked at this year that we've already implemented is really a couple of different changes to the office on how we process cases initially and embedding team members that are responsible for that work directly within the teams they support, so they're not an independent team. And a couple of organizational structure changes that we believe will benefit the department, not just the department, but, but the public, right? So one of our objectives is to continue to improve upon assigning cases. When the court appoints us a case, let's say this morning, the court appoints us 20 new clients, that we're able to get those 20 new clients assigned their assigned attorney as quickly as possible. And we've set out some very specific goals that those assignments will take place in a certain period of time, under three days, if they're out of custody, and within 24 hours if they are in custody. So we'll continue to, to look for gaps in the department and ways we can continue to improve the structure of the department. We do have some gaps, frankly. We've grown as a department by about 37% in staffing levels over the past four years. And we need to grow as an organization in step to meet those changes. Next strategic objective that we have this year is continuing to enhance our organizational culture. Believe pretty firmly that the culture of the department is something that we continue to improve upon. But a couple of different initiatives is to revisit, we just had a meeting about this, is we're going to revisit our mission, vision, and values. We developed those mission, vision, values four years ago as well. And a lot has changed, not just in our environment and in our justice system, but also with our staff. So we'll be endeavoring to revisit those mission, vision, and values and, and perhaps take a new approach with some of them. And our last strategic objective for this year is to continue to implement the E-Defender Case Management System that the board invested in, in our office along with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I think, as I mentioned, a couple of department director meetings ago, it has been quite a road to get to this point in implementing this case management system. We realized early on that in this year that this is not something that is going to be completed in the first six months, that the scope and scale of such a project, excuse me, is going to be ongoing, not just through 2022, but frankly, for years to come. We've had the tremendous benefit of incredibly talented staff, two of which you see on the screen here, with Jose and Mia's dedication to implementing this system with countless hundreds of hours, along with an entire team of staff that have played a vital role in implementing the system. But it's up and running, it's working, we're using it every day. But if I had to put a percentage, and this is very anecdotal, on where we're at with the capability of the system, it's probably around 30%. So we can, obviously, we want to get that system up to 100% utilization and realization, but it's going to take time, and it may take even more investment. So those are really just a sort of a quick overview of our strategic objectives for, for this year that we're all excited about, and we hope to meet. And then I'll highlight a couple of other initiatives that we have planned for this year. And one obviously is the acquisition of 909. So the plans, at least for us right now, just to share is when that building becomes available. And we've had a meeting with IT recently on, on the needs of our department in the building. But when that opportunity becomes available, what we'll be doing is moving our entire district court team, which is a 12-person team into that building. As it currently stands right now, we're going through a process here in the department, given, given the new directive from, from Public Health on welcoming staff back to the office and increased hours and working through teleworking agreements for, for all staff. As a result of that, currently in our building, it isn't, it is incredibly challenging to get, given our floor plan and space, to get everybody back into the building prior to, prior to this expansion opportunity. But once that opportunity becomes available to us, we will be taking our 12-person district court team and moving them into that building, which will provide us adequate space in Building 6, our current building, to reorganize and redeploy the staff that will remain here in this building. But I can tell you that the, the team and the department is, is excited with the opportunity. One of our other, obviously, big initiatives this year is our partnership with the Thurston County Resource Center, or HUB, as it's been a working title. Had a very good meeting earlier this week with, with Jackie, the new program manager of the Resource Hub. And a lot, a lot is yet to be developed on what that partnership's going to look like. But I just want this board to know and in the community to know our commitment to its success. Obviously, as public defenders, our clients, many of whom have unmet behavioral health needs, and taking, taking a step back and looking back two or three years ago to this initial concept of having a resource center here on campus for those individuals, whether they are pretrial or being released from our jail, to have the opportunity to have their behavioral health needs met right here is just incredible. It's incredibly exciting, and it makes us unique. I get to sit in on a lot of meetings around the state, and I can tell you that there's only a minority of counties in the state that have such a resource available. But I think there would be 100% consensus that every county could use and benefit from something, something like this project. So we'll continue to tease out how, how that partnership's going to work on a daily basis. But needless to say, we're very excited about that. Obviously, one of the other, whether it's initiative or something we're going to continue to monitor, and I monitor it every week, is attorney caseloads. The pandemic has obviously been very challenging for our trial attorneys. I think, and there's no doubt about that, and I know I've expressed this to the board in the past. We have outstanding trial attorneys that have done an amazing job throughout the pandemic, as well as our professional staff, to continue to deliver high-quality public defense. However, you know, the pandemic's effects of backlogs on their trial, their trial workload is, it's hard to calculate, I'll be frank. It is not easy to calculate the impacts of the pandemic. But I can tell you that every case that we represent through the pandemic has taken more time. So right now, we'll continue to monitor those caseloads and make sure our attorneys are supported and making adjustments when necessary to support our attorneys to get the work done. And our last initiative, obviously, is, is implementing this new team that we have as a result of, of the pandemic with the ARPA-funded positions. Right now, our office has been funded two attorney positions to represent clients that, that are, as a result of the backlog, that are at the prosecutor's office. We have our first attorney starts on Monday. Excited about that. Recruiting has been challenging, as Commissioner Mejia mentioned yesterday in the board meeting. And I echo that. It is a challenging environment to, to recruit. But we've had some successful recruits so far. So we have our first position starting on Monday, and our second position will join the team, two-person team, the first week of May. And those positions are going to exclusively work with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office on cases that have been identified as referred backlog cases, as the county has defined them. So we're excited about that. It gives us an opportunity to do a internal promotion for one of our district court attorneys. And as a result of that promotion, we will be, we're in the process right now of recruiting that vacancy as well. So, so we'll see how that goes. Of course, there's uncertainty with this team on how the process is going to go and how many cases we're going to see every month. But I know, I believe, we'll be back before the board. I think Romero's mentioned sometime, perhaps next month, to revisit the ARPA funding and the first phase of funding as a team. So look forward to that meeting. But hopefully, we'll get, we'll get some more tangible data on what those caseloads are going to look like sometime next month. So with that, I've essentially gone through all my slides, and I'll stop sharing and leave it for open forum. Obviously, I have the benefit of having my team with me here today to answer any specific questions you may have about the, the unit that they supervise or the clients that they serve. But, you know, I'll have, you know, a couple of final comments, but I'll certainly open it up to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Patrick. So I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Edwards.
Patrick, how is work from home playing in with either retention or recruitment? And is it looked at as a benefit, if allowed? I mean, do people think they want to, some people it can? Do they want to work from home? And how's that working out if they do, or whatever you, what have you implemented there?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It's a very topical and relevant question. We are, like I mentioned, we are currently in the process right now of working with each staff member on a new teleworking agreement. But I have, I'll say this, you know, we were a department, I, I think, probably like many other offices and departments, that prior to the pandemic, we never had teleworking agreements. Really, frankly, teleworking was not part of our culture. I can say, obviously, it was forced, but as I've committed to the staff, I believe teleworking is going to continue to be a part of this department's culture. I think there's tremendous benefit for staff to provide an opportunity to telework. Of course, it depends on the position, Commissioner. So really, it's a very specific decision that needs to be made by each managing team member based on the position. But what I've committed to is continuing to make that an opportunity for staff, depending on their position, that want to continue to telework. I can tell you in recruiting, we just had a recent recruitment where, you know, the question of, do you allow teleworking came up? So I do think it behooves, at least us, I only want to speak for us as a department, to continue to support teleworking opportunities, depending on the position and appropriate amount. Now, I do think there is a culture shift throughout the pandemic. We've heavily relied upon teleworking due to the nature of the virus, right? And, and the risk of having a certain amount of folks in the office at any given point, we've gone through phases, right, of different levels of staff member that I felt were appropriate to have in the office at any given point. So throughout most of, much of the pandemic, we were operating with staffing levels under 40% at any given point here in the office, just due to, you know, the space and the risk associated with the virus. So I don't know if I'm directly answering your question, other than to say that I think, at least for us philosophically, I will continue to support staff that want to telework. And some staff don't want to telework, Commissioner, I'll just tell you. And I'm guilty of that myself, but, and as, as is others you see here on the screen, Robin and Kevin as well, and Mia. But, but I do think it's an advantage. I do think it puts us in the advantage as a department to make that an option for staff. Again, to have a, you know, a new work-life balance. And I think that's something that is incredibly important, that, that we've taken advantage of. I think it improves staff overall happiness and their employment if they can have. I think it improves staff overall happiness and their employment if they can have those options. Again, in moderation and depending on the position.
Yeah, good. I I was at a county-wide statewide conference last week, and that was a a big issue for all county departments. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you. My question is in regards, my first question is regards to kind of the budget, right? We saw kind of a huge return last year, but it was due just because of trials not being able to go forward. Now, I'm going to keep a very positive outlook here. Let's say trials were just to just skyrocket and all the courtrooms could have trials. Do you see, how do you see that impacting your office? Because of course, then, you know, you have to process more cases. And so with that huge return, do you think it would completely impact your budget or or how would that look like?
That's a, it's a great question, Commissioner. I mean, I certainly, there's going to be budget impacts, right? I'll give you some very tangible examples and, you know, I think, as I mentioned before, you know, one obvious, you know, driver there was the suspension of trials, but that has so many tangential impacts. I will now give you an example. What we saw throughout the pandemic is certain experts that are necessary for the defense of a case, but due to the nature of the pandemic, and maybe they were high-risk or some of the, you know, some of the suspensions at the jail weren't able to A, be retained on a case or didn't want to be retained. And if they were, they really couldn't perform the work because of because of those restrictions, right? So it's not just, we expect if trials to go forward, that our independent contractors, for example, because obviously all our, you know, our salary and benefit staff, trial attorneys, there's no financial impact of their salary or benefit if they go to 20 trials this year. But our independent contractors, we will see the financial impact of of that additional work for them. So I, you know, I think it's it's a multi-layered issue, but I do think that if we continue to have trials throughout this year, we're going to see more billable hours from our independent contractors because they're going to trial and trials are taking longer too, right? So what may have taken one day to pick a jury now may take two, right? So what may be an eight-hour process for a billable attorney might be 16 hours, right? Just to pick the jury. And then the trial may go an extra two days because of all the navigation the court's having to do to make it safe for jurors. So it it really is a complex. There are a lot of complexities to the drivers, but I would say that if this year, if we continue to have jury trials open and available, that we will see an increase in our professional service actuals and our and our panel attorney actuals. And we'll see some in internal increases in our professional services as well, right? So those experts that previously weren't retained or unable to be retained due to the pandemic now are available. Then we'll see some, we'll certainly see some increases there.
Thank you, Patrick. My next question is in regards to juvenile court. And we've been hearing a lot, you know, where you know, how the pandemic has just affected a lot of, a lot of younger kids. And I was wondering, you know, it's great to see that the in-house numbers are so high. But I was wondering about that caseload. Has has that increased, especially as the pandemic has been going on? Has it decreased? Just what do those numbers look like?
Well, I can certainly bring the numbers back up and then I'll, I'll, you know, ask Robin to to weigh in as well. And as, you know, she's, she's the team lead for that. I will say that, you know, the numbers in overall in juvenile court throughout the pandemic have been pretty static and in a good way. We haven't seen a spike in cases. In fact, probably quite the opposite. I I have to refer to the numbers, but I'm I'm not going to try to do that just yet because I'm still in slideshow mode and I have to do some escaping here. But we have seen a decrease in overall numbers, frankly, in juvenile court, you know. And the the drivers for that, you know, I wouldn't know, but I'll pass it over to Robin so she can share her thoughts too. Very good question.
Yeah, our our numbers have continued to be low since everything initially shut down in early 2020. In 2020 and 2021, that seemed to be in significant part due to the closure of schools, schools being mostly online. And so referrals from schools and resource officers at schools appear to be down. But also, you know, youth aren't congregating the way that they typically have. They have not been outside of the home as much as in pre-COVID levels. And so it seems that they are generally getting in less trouble. But our number of more serious cases, you know, sex offenses, the cases that we do get are more serious. And so our office has been representing a much higher number than usual of juvenile sex offenses, which is unfortunate. But what is fortunate is that we now have two juvenile defense attorneys in-house. And we are able to represent our youth on every kind of case where they might come before the court, from truancies to class A felonies. And another change that happened in the last year is a changes to the rules regarding when a warrant can be obtained for a youth and when a youth can be detained pre-trial. And so that has resulted in fairly low numbers of youth being incarcerated at any given time. And more stringent requirements on what constitutes a threat to community safety in order to take the youth into custody. So that's been beneficial for our clients as well.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, just looking quickly back at the numbers, we, yeah, we have seen a decline over the past four years in the number of cases that our office has received as juvenile referrals. And, you know, one other thing to add to Robin's comments as well is, you know, there's been some nice changes in the law in juvenile, for juvenile justice, specifically with a prosecutor's ability and authority to divert cases. So they've widened the net there and I don't have their numbers, but certainly I think that's that's probably, you know, helped as well as more cases are eligible to be diverted that are juvenile cases that previously were ineligible.
Thank you.
It's a great question.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Robin. Questions from the county manager?
No, I really don't have any any questions. I really appreciate the briefing.
Questions from Robin, Assistant County Manager? Okay, and I I don't have any further questions. Just, I'll echo what the county manager said. There was, it's a great presentation. Thank you so much. And, you know, I think there'll be more to come this year. I think as we start opening up more, I know those numbers will definitely change. So thank you for all that your office does and and your management team. Thank you for being here today. With that, if there's not anything else, Patrick?
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and really appreciate the time. You know, I'll just say, you know, one final thing in closing that, you know, on behalf of everybody that works here. Sort of echo my comments earlier. I am just incredibly proud of the staff that work in this office. I feel very strongly that we here in Thurston County have one of the best public defender offices in the state for for our community to provide representation. And and much of that has to do with the support of this board and and the support of our stakeholders. But also ultimately, it's the people who work here in this department. It certainly isn't me. It's the folks you see on screen and the folks that aren't on screen this morning that are over in the jail or in court doing the work. So I appreciate your time and we'll come back sometime later this year and and give you an update on how we're doing.
Great. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could I close out a comment?
Yes, of course.
Patrick, I want to take this opportunity to thank you because it's all about leadership. I'm the only one that's been here through quite a period of time. I mean, you've got a good team. I I'm not downplaying that at all, but we, and I say we, the county board has not always had the relationship and confidence that I see now. So I just want to pass that on to you because you've got some new people there and they probably ought to hear that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Woo-hoo, Patrick!
Well, it's, guys, it's, yeah. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.